Alrighty then, I will call the regular order of the Ridgeway Town Council. Excuse me, got a frog in my throat. For Wednesday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, to order and ask for a roll call, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Graham, Ray.
Here.
Cropper here, Bacon here, Skylar. Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Meyer.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here. All right, thank you very much. That takes us to additions and deletions to the agenda. Are there any?
I have been.
Nothing from staff.
Okay. Then that brings us to the adoption of the consent calendar. Few more items on there than usual. Anybody want to pull any of those off, or is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
A second. Alright, that's.
Right.
You're gonna have to help me out. I'd sound like Polly made the motion. Was there a second?
That's seconded.
Okay, um, motion seconded, roll call vote, please.
Okay, do I need to do roll calls if you don't vote?
A good question. Beau Preston, maybe not.
Let the attorney advise, but I think we're good to do.
Yeah, I would agree with that, that you can move forward without doing the roll call. Unless there's a situation where the.
Yeah, you broke up a hole there, but if I I would guess that if there's a tie, then we'd go back and do a roll call. If it's not clear that the outcome.
And we have so many ties.
Yeah, exactly. So all in favor?
I.
Opposed? That's unanimously. That brings us to public comments. Establish time on the agenda for folks to address council regarding any item that's not otherwise listed on the agenda. I think we have at least one person tonight. Is Val either on Zoom or in the room, Preston?
Val was in the room and Tanya is in the room. Tanya, step it up first.
Okay.
So I want to move back. These are samples of what I'll be talking about first. Hello, Tanya Ishikawa, Lena Street in Ridgway, and I'm here for two different organizations tonight. I could step down between each if you want me to. But otherwise, I'm going to start with the Ridgway Area Chamber of Commerce. We just got a letter this week and I just wanted to share it with council because it's exciting. The state was pleased to inform us that our project, the Uncompagri Plateau San Juan's gravel adventure guide was approved for a three thirty-four thousand five hundred dollar grant. And that grant is the Colorado State Outdoor Recreation Grant Program funded through the Travel Tourism and Outdoor Recreation Program from the DDA, the Economic Development Agency, using American Rescue Plan Act dollars. The Colorado Outdoor Recreation Industry Office is allocating nearly four million dollars in competitive funding. And we are part of it. So so I'm really excited. So that'll start this summer. We actually have to wait for that purchase order, so it doesn't happen right away. But I think I've mentioned it in the past and I just thought I'd let you know that now we're going to start. So Friday, I'm meeting with the Coalition of Bike Advoc- Bike, Bike Shops and Bike Advocates to discuss the roots more, but this is three different counties. It's not the counties themselves doing it, but the people from those counties. We have people from Montrose Surf and Cycle in Montrose. We have from West End Gravel Rush up there in the Norwood area. We have collaboration. We have Andy from the Ridgway Adventure Sports. We have about eight different people actually on that team to help design this. And then we're actually hiring two guys from the Pueblo area who have done those guides that I'm passing around, and they're going to do a similar one for us. And we're thinking about probably twelve routes in our guide and a mixture of long ones and short ones on gravel roads. So gravel adventure is, you know, not mountain biking as in the rat trail and it's not road biking as in the road races that you see on like Highway five fifty or sixty-two. It's on country roads. And, you know, the Ridgway, Ridgway doesn't have tons of those that have been used historically for that purpose. Yay, see, someone here says that. Me too. I love gravel riding. Yeah, gravel riding. That's the appropriate term. Yep. And yeah, now that we're involved with it, I'm seeing, you know, like Telluride area just had their gravel riding race. There's another celebration happening. We're considering, since the guide won't come out till at least this fall or maybe early spring next year, doing some kind of celebration of this grant this summer and having, you know, a celebration ride or something like that. So we'd really like to do that. But we'll probably have about three, three or four routes in the Ridgway-Uray area, three or four routes in the Norwood and West End area and three or four, let's see, yeah, towards Montrose. So that's what we're planning for. And if you have suggestions for it, and it's, you know, it's a planned process and it's grassroots with a lot of other people and organizations, so we welcome more input. And we'll be looking for some advertising from people who are interested, like in some guides, real estate companies do it. In other guides, it's strictly bike-related businesses. We'll be putting those in there. We had applied for a slightly larger grant because we were going to have a video that goes along with it, which is what the two guys usually do. But the state didn't feel like that video was important. So we're going to discuss whether we think that video is important and find funding elsewhere if we want to. So that's my chamber report. Any questions?
Have you talked to Kelly Ryan at all?
You know, I don't even think we have reached out to her. I'll have to. I mean, obviously, she's an obvious one. So yeah, thanks. I'll put her on my list.
And yeah, Kelly and San Juan Hudson for sure.
Yeah.
I mean, all of the routes across the country are all developed by them.
Yeah.
Eighty-nine.
Thanks. Yeah. We have another guy, Jimmy Clark, who doesn't own anything, but he's, you know, does all the routes around here and he's on our community. But thanks, Kelly Ryan. And the other thing I've up here is for is Uncompagri Watership Partnership. And this next week is crazy. So starting tomorrow, I go to Montrose and I do a presentation with Trot Unlimited Chabano Conservation District and the Friends of the River Uncompagri at the Library for the League of Women Motors. And, you know, probably people from here won't want to get that way. Although I have to tell you, I only got stopped for about five minutes at most, both ways, going to Montrose today. So it was like a miracle. Some ceremony or painting. Yeah, that's behind it later. It's a northern Cheyenne secret. But um, but so anyway, at one to two thirty, I'll be doing, we'll be doing that presentation together and it's a free community presentation. And what's exciting about that is afterwards, I run over to Go Big banners and I pick up the banners for River Fest. So River Fest is June twenty-fourth, about a week away, nine days away. Amazing amount of people have volunteered and are going to come out and help us. The last spike is a new brass Celtic-style band that will be playing three to five. The River Fest starts at twelve because we have river races, the Junk of the Yunk. Not sure about the Rubber Ducky Race this year. I mean, they could end up down at the reservoir if we're not careful. Although today I saw a really cool extra channel that hadn't been there before, and I'm considering whether we can get the ducks over to that channel, which would be safer and easier to catch them. Anything else about River Fest? There's a website if you want to see more. Mountain Chill has been doing some great ads for us. It's really great. Our sponsors, our top sponsors is here, Alpine Bay Double RL Ranch Rocky Mountain Cannabis. And then the next level sponsors, Tana Ridgway, is among those six sponsors. So we really appreciate that, keeping it a free festival. Lots of water education going to happen at the festival this year. The usual and a lot of, oh, so twelve o'clock, twelve to five. So it's a pretty compact, just five hours, and there's a lot happening. So you should come for the whole thing. There's a silent auction with over fifty items in it. Amazing stuff, you know, backpacks, some river gear, restaurant certificates, all kinds of good stuff. Oh, that adds one hour to the festival, actually. Where people who show up early between eleven and twelve could actually have a special discount on our silent auction items, so we can sell them quick and early. So that, that, that's happening too. And we have a special MC this year. Our MC this year is Colin Sullivan from Sherbino and Weehawken thing, as well as Telluride other thing. So that's going to be great and he'll be fun to listen to on stage. So that's happening then. But just before then, June twenty-second, at Ridgway State Park, we have the world's largest swimming lesson, which our part of the lesson will not be the world's largest. We don't know how many people we're expecting, but it'll be probably be somewhere between ten and forty swimming lesson participants. And the Montana's Rec District is teaching the lesson. And this is part of an international event that promotes swimming safety. And so that's why it becomes the largest event. And so that's three o'clock, Ridgway State Park on June twenty-second. And yeah, sorry, I didn't bring flyers. I'm running around, but I can send you flyers if you want them. And I know I already informed a lot of people that this is going on, but three to four, it's a pretty short event. And it's really cool. They have a PFD, which is Life Jacket Trailer, which has a spinning wheel that you learn a lot about safety in the water, especially outdoor water. And kids will be able to make their own t-shirts and other people will win sunglasses and all kinds of fun stuff. So cool event. And then another event is June seventeenth, this coming Saturday. So just a couple of days away. Got one town council member already signed up to volunteer. Just nine o'clock to twelve in the morning at Rollins Park. We're doing litter pickup, ranch pickup, kind of maintain the trails a bit. This year we're also re-fixing up the split rail fences that you have there. It's been damaged a while ago and now missing pieces. But luckily, you have some pieces from Didi Decker's old parking lot that we can use. So good reuse of materials. And that's, that one you don't have to sign up for. You could probably just show up. But if you have a chance to email me, if you go to the UWP website and see my address, you can let me know that you're coming. So I can at least plan for more snacks and lemonade. Yep. And I think that's about it. Thanks.
Great, Tanya. That's a very impressive report. You got a lot going on.
After this, I'm going to enjoy July and some amazing concerts by my favorite town.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions for Tanya, either in the room or online? All right, Val, take it away.
Yeah, I'm Val Schwark, and I'm the Chair of the Rock Dark Sky Committee. And on behalf of that committee and dark sky friends in the area is I'm just going to bring everyone up to speed on a couple of dark sky events this summer here in the area. And in ten days, we're going to kick things off at the Ridgway State Park. Because we're going to have presentations and a and stargazing at, at the park, starting at about nine, nine PM. And then for, I'm not sure everyone is aware of this, but actually Ridgway State Park is pursuing becoming a dark sky certified dark sky park. And they did receive in the early part of this year a small award from the state of Colorado to help accelerate that process. So so we're, we're going to actually help them out with, with an event that they have to hold some events a year to qualify. And then Ridgway here on July fourteenth is at the, at the Ridgway Community Garden. We're going to have a stargazing event with some binoculars and telescopes at the Ridgway Community Garden. That's probably starting at about nine, nine o'clock as well. And then on August tenth is some presentations on dark sky preservation and a meteor watch at Top of the Pines. And plus some stargazing. And so as probably folks, some of you may know, that's the beginning of the Percy Meteor Shire, which is probably one of the more impressive ones. We've been there other years at Top of the Pines and, and we were actually impressed even through wildfire smoke. So hopefully with all the moisture this year is that we won't have as much smoke. And so skies are always great up there. And then finally, what I have is, yeah, we don't have a specific date yet, but fall of this year, we're hoping to have that lighting seminar, dark sky friendly lighting, lighting seminar. And we'll probably also have another showing of Saving the Dark. And we're hoping to have that at the Sherbino and, and free for everyone. And so we would like to invite the town staff and also, I say Jake on, on, on Zoom, the county staff as they become, as an opportunity to become more familiar with, with gliding technology in the, in the area. So the final thing I just want to mention is, is probably most of you know that the, the county is, is, has a survey app for a master plan update for the master plan update. And, and that believe that closes, that survey closes on the twenty-first of June. And so I encourage everyone to, if you have not did that survey yet, I encourage you to do that. And certainly voice your support for, for dark skies in the county. And so since Ridgway, Top of the Pines, and soon to be Ridgway State Park, being dark sky certified communities, we would really hope for the county to move in that direction as well. So thanks very much. Do any questions?
What is the date on that state park?
The, it's ten days from now, the twenty-fourth of June.
Okay.
And then July fourteenth at the Ridgway's Community Garden. And the tenth of August at Top of the Pines.
Is there any, does International Dark Sky organization have any way of like identifying regions where there's concentrations of international dark sky jurisdictions? I know there's, there's bigger areas, there's smaller areas, but with all the work that's been done in our, our region, it would be really cool to highlight how many different organizations are in a, a small area.
Yeah, actually, I mean, IDA just has a listing of, of all the, all the dark certified dark sky in these parks. This southwestern Colorado is actually is, is, is a concentration, not only Ridgway, but where's Norwood, New Glen, Naterita. You know, and so.
I, I'm aware of the fact that we have really dark skies. I just, I'm thinking about it as a.
Yeah, but I mean, in terms of having a map, for instance, you go to their website, the actually, the, I think the Dark Sky Cooperative based on Moab. They have, and I, I could, I could send you the link.
Okay, I was just curious.
They have, they have a, a, a map based on our GIS that, that shows you in, in the Colorado plateaus. So it will be western Colorado and eastern Utah. And this is actually pretty, pretty much a hotbed for, for dark skies and all that, you know. So not only do we have a dark asset, but, but we do have, you know, a lot of advocates that have gone the extra effort to, to certify it. So.
Construction that I've noticed that the elementary school here is all lit up the night, or was for a couple nights.
Yeah, might be construction or whatever. You know, and so I assume that their update is going to be all dark sky compliant according to the, to the town code. And so
I just figured you were on that.
I will be. Yeah. So I mean, Preston is going to be on top of that. So. Okay, thank you very much.
So Beth, in response to your point, a thought occurs to me that for the creative districts, there's collaboration called the Creative Corridor that involves a bunch of creative districts in the sort of central, south, south central area. They got a grant through the Colorado Tourism Office to do that. I'd love to see whether it's a chamber or, or some entity, maybe even creative district to look into a CTO grant to promote this region as a dark sky place to visit. I think that's a really great idea.
Yeah, John, I think they, they actually, they, they, they do have a stargazing.
Route as well.
Yeah.
And we're part of that.
Yeah. So yeah, Ridgway Area Chamber is part of that. And so I think part of Tanya can help with, with the actual website or the, the link for that. I don't have that off the top of my head. But includes this area and includes some other areas of Colorado that they're not certified, but, but, you know, either in the pipeline or or whatever, like Lake City. It just, just like last, last week, Lake City had a Starfest. And, and I was an invited speaker there. And so, and in fact, you know, I'm thinking about possibly having something like that here in Uray County with, with Ridgway State Park and the town here, Ridgway, Top of the Pines, you know, Norwood, maybe have something over this neck of the woods.
That's a great idea. Great idea.
Maybe next year, next summer, maybe August or September. But thank you.
So your event at the park is the same day as the River Fest.
Yes, dark sky.
The dark sky.
Yeah, it's late. It, it, yeah.
River Fest is over five. It started at nine.
Yeah, so. You don't want to drink too much, you don't want to drink too much beer at the River Fest so that you could still be standing.
My point is. So.
Yeah, well, that is, is the park, the park is, is responsible for, for marketing and all that. I'll, I'll let them man the food. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Phil. Anybody else have, tell the comment?
Yes, please. Hi, Sue Push. Quick reminder that tomorrow at ten o'clock at the Sherbino, the area health agency is coming to do the opioid and Narcan training. Free, ten o'clock tomorrow. She's bringing Narcan for everyone. My hope is that the more prepared we are, the less likely we are to need it. So that's where we're going. That should be about an hour, ten o'clock at the Sherbino.
Thanks, Sue. Anybody have questions about that?
Yeah.
I see Jake has his hand up. Jake Nice.
I had just have a call to the public item.
Go ahead.
Okay, just a, another plug for the Uray County Master Plan Survey, like Val mentioned, it's open till July twenty-first. And that's really important for everyone to fill out. So definitely encourage all the town council members. And then also, if you can, please reach out to friends who live in the area who might not be paying as close attention. That document is going to inform policy decisions for probably the next thirty years. So really, really crucial, this won't be your last opportunity to provide input. But this survey is one of the big tools that's going to get used in this process. Thanks.
Thanks, Jake. Anybody have questions for Jake on that? Any other public comment? One more.
Sorry, Johnson. I am the PR and marketing consultant for the Ridgway Area Chamber of Commerce. And I wanted to invite all town council members to the business after hours we're having on Tuesday, June twentieth, five thirty to seven thirty at the Ridgway. And yeah, we just really want to increase engagement in the community. And yeah, just put a face and a name for me and I will be sending out survey to all of you and would invite you to answer the survey so that the chamber can improve based on public feedback. And yeah.
Great, thanks, Catherine. That's awesome. It's on my calendar. Anybody have questions for Catherine? Okay, anybody else? Jake, your hand's still up, but I assume that just needs to, that's just from the last one. All right, that will take us to public requests and presentations. That number eight is a request to close North Cora Street between Railroad and Roundhouse to the annual block party on August thirty-first from five to ten PM. Pam?
This event has happened for a few years now, I believe, three. And it's exactly what they've done in the past. As Mayor said, they would close the street from North Cora on the upper, north corner between Railroad and Roundhouse. They put a band out over by the depot. And, and they're doing that from five until ten. So there's necessity for people to shut the street down again.
Okay.
Just need to be, sounds like a motion.
You know, we probably need to.
Yeah, we need to see if anybody has any comments or questions, either for staff, I'd assume Will isn't in the room. Pam presented it for him. It's pretty straightforward. They've done it in the past, but do you want to give an opportunity for anybody to comment or question about it? And if there is none, entertain a motion.
Move to approve. Okay, use mark facility right away. North Cora Railroad, Roundhouse, industrial area.
Okay, motion made by Terry, seconded by Polly. All in favor?
I.
Opposed? All right, passing unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item number nine, request to extend the road closure for the Fete de la Musique and close off North Cora Street to Otto Street. The original request was to Frederick. Again, Pam, you taking this one?
I, I think Sue's here. No.
Oh, shoot, go ahead.
I just wanted to let the, let you all know that we dropped off flyers to the six other driveways that would be affected by this closure yesterday with a phone number to call if they need help getting her out and let them know that we are coming tonight to do this. So.
Any questions, comments from council?
So this is just a change from the application that council has already approved.
Right.
You approved that to, and Frederick, and they're now asking to go off.
I know I've talked to a couple of people who live on that block and they're, they're okay with it. I haven't heard from everyone, but any concerns from council?
Sounds fun.
More bacon.
Did you say more bacon?
Yeah. It's not the one K.
Terry's confused.
You gotta wait till October.
I moved to approve the modification to the Fete de la Musique street pleasure.
All right, motion made by Beth, seconded by Russ. All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Passing unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to, I remember, ten proclamation supporting the third annual Uray Pride Celebration. No one's got my name on it. I just have to say right off the bat that given a lot of things that are happening in our country these days on the issue of rights for people of other genders and gender identifications and all of this stuff, I just, I'm really proud that Ridgway has always supported pride and recognized the rights of all people to live as they choose. And I just think it's, it's awesome that we've always supported this and then we do it with a proclamation like this. So I, I don't believe I need to read the whole proclamation unless someone wants me to. I'm actually, that's, that the event is this weekend. The, 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 the Uray County Pride Event is this weekend. And I'm hoping that some of you will be able to attend and maybe one or more of you might be willing to speak. But because I won't be able to be there, but I support them one thousand percent and urge all of us to do the same. So other, other comments, questions on this item?
I think it's awesome that we are, as a community and as a town, say this out loud proudly to our community to support not only members of the LGBTQIA2S plus population, but just to make sure that people know where we stand. Yeah, and just, this is striking a particular chord. As I had family members who had a pride like stolen from their porch. And it's happened throughout their community and it's now being investigated as a hate crime. So it feels particularly poignant to be able to support this today.
Awesome. Anybody in the audience, either on Zoom or in the room, have comments or questions?
We have comment in the audience here.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Nick Coleman, and I'm a business person here and member of the Gay Pride Committee. And I want to thank the council again for doing the proclamation and being so, so supportive of us. I also wanted to remind you this is about happy, joyous, and being able to be who we are. This is also the twenty-fifth anniversary of Matthew Shepard's murder this year. He was beaten, left to die on a fence in Laramie, Wyoming on October sixth, nineteen ninety-eight. Ninety-eight, that's only twenty-five years ago. And that was real close to where I went to school. I was raised in Montrose. I was out and about in nineteen eighty. I can't tell you what joy this is for me to see this happen here. And for kids to be able to feel safe here. Because that's something I never had. But I also want to remind people that it's not over, it's not done. It's not just, you know, okay, we get a pride day. And let's, let's keep going, you know, just ignore it for the rest of the year. And you guys have been incredibly supportive of all the work that we've been doing. And you guys have been incredibly supportive of all the work that we've been doing. And the things that we're doing in the community to try and raise the safety for everybody. And so this is just sort of the culmination of it. But thank you. Thank you again so much. And you'll probably hear the same story next year.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you. Powerful words and a great reminder that we really need to do the work all year round, all the time to keep reminding our fellow human beings the importance of everyone's rights to live as they choose to live. So thank you for that reminder. I'll ask for a motion.
I move to approve the doc, the proclamation declaring June twenty twenty two. Are we on item eleven?
Yep.
On item ten.
There we go. Proclamation supporting the third annual Yuri County Pride Celebration.
Second.
All right, motions made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, of course. Thank you very much. That takes us to item number eleven, proclamation declaring June is Immigrant Heritage Month, another important issue. And I, do we have Luke Stock in the audience for this? I see his name on it. Sounds like none.
I think so.
Okay. You guys all have the the proclamation in front of you. Again, I think this is another issue that's, that's big in this country right now and one that I'm proud that Ridgeway takes this kind of stand on. Recognizing that, as that first word says, that immigrants have vastly diversified and enriched the cultural tapestry of our nation throughout its history. Again, I don't think I need to read the whole thing, but I do think this is a really essential thing for us to recognize as a, as a community. So again, any comments or questions either from council or in the audience? Hearing none.
To approve proclamation declaring June twenty twenty three as immigrant heritage.
Second.
I didn't hear who seconded that. It was a tie, but yeah, okay, so motion's made and seconded, all in favor? Opposed? None. Thank you very much. That moving right on, right along, takes us to our three public hearings for tonight. As most of us know, but I'll remind the audience, public hearings in the state of Colorado are more formal, process quasi judicial, where we hear an application. We typically give the applicant opportunity to address the council with any additional information about their application. Then we open it up for public comment. At the end of that time, we close the poll comment and we deliberate. So it's, it's truly a quasi judicial process. Item number twelve is an application for a restaurant liquor license from Greenwood Ridgway LLC. Member Marty Frank, DPA Greenwood's, location one sixty Palomino Trail. Pam, are you taking this one?
Yeah. And I'm presenting a application for a restaurant liquor license from Greenwood's Ridgway LLC. The sole member is Martin Frank. And the premises is one sixty Palomino Trail with a trade name for the business of Greenwood's. This location is currently licensed as Peony's Pizza. But the applicant is no, no longer holds a lease there, so they have given up their right to that license. They all formal hearing processes have been adhered to. Their premises has been posted, published. And the applicant is seeking a concurrent review on this application, which means that the local jurisdiction or the town would be able to issue a temporary permit if the state license is not received by the time they plan on opening, which I believe since July. The applicant is leasing these premises and will be licensing the building and patios on the east and west side of the building. And Marty is here. I believe he would just like to introduce himself.
Yes. Hello, Marty Frank. Nice to meet you. Appreciate you taking the time to consider us for this license. You guys have any questions? More happy to answer them.
What you got, Wayne?
We're doing rustic American food with a southern influence. Myself and the chef are both from Georgia, so we do breakfast, lunch and dinner seven days a week. And we're hoping to be open by like August first would be ideal, but we'll see how it goes.
Awesome. We love that. I live on that side of the town or town, and I'm excited to have a restaurant there.
Look forward to seeing you all there.
On their side of the tracks.
Great, thanks, Marty. Uh, council, have any questions for Marty or for staff? Okay, pretty straightforward. I'll open it up for public comment. Anyone either in the room or here on Zoom have questions or comments? Going once, going twice. I will close public comment and bring it back up here for deliberation or motion.
I'll move to approve an application for a restaurant liquor license for Greenwood's. Second.
All right, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you. Next item is the public hearing, second reading of ordinance number oh three dash twenty twenty three, amending chapter six, the building regs, amending chapter seven, the planning and zoning regs and amending chapter eight licensing in the Ridgeway Municipal Code and amending the official zoning map. And I believe TJ Dublock of Community Planning Strategies is going to present this.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Rest in your mind, allow me to presentation here quick.
And TJ, your video seems to be lagging. You can go ahead and turn it off if you'd like.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and do that. We're having some internet issues here. All right, there we go. Hopefully that will, will help. All right, now we're sharing good.
Yep.
Excellent. So thank you, Mayor, for the introduction and yeah, just I know you guys have seen this multiple times, but since tonight is the hearing, I'm going to probably go through a little bit just so that you have things on the record. And if there are members of the audience or the public that are there, we'll know a little bit more about what we did to get here. Here's what we'll do this evening. We'll go through kind of briefly the proposed changes. This will be just for everybody's application. A gross overstatement and oversimplification of what we've done. But at least wanted to touch on some of the major things that we've done over the last about eight months. And then we'll go over the process that got us here. We'll allow some time for questions and answers. Both from the council if needed, but also as mentioned, this is a public hearing. And then, oh, sorry, it should actually be action on second reading, not the first. So for some of the you know, when we kicked this thing off back in, gosh, September, we identified these, actually the top three objectives of what we're trying to accomplish. First, to clarify the review process. Secondly, to remove contradictions and duplications in chapter seven. And then the main, the third objective that we started with was to create a structure that could easily be amended. We knew we were going to be doing a full update, so we focused on the structure and the process in this update. And then as we went through, we started compiling a list of future code amendments that should be considered by council. And so what you've seen through this process and what we've developed is kind of a list that can help the town prioritize budgets and updates for each year. So those are the four objectives that we sought to achieve and I might be a little bit biased, but I think we did achieve that over our time here. So the first, the first big thing that we did to achieve this is we, we moved things into the three separate buckets. You've probably heard me say that codes have the three elements, the administrative provisions, the procedures and the standards. And this allows it to be updated simply. So that was our first objective and first major change. If you will. Next, we've went, we sought to clarify the general development review process, and that's both the graphics that you see on the top there, annexation, plating, rezoning, site design and building permit is the general kind of application types and how it kind of flows. In a perfect world, it doesn't always, but at least kind of clarifying that a little bit in the code. As well as this next, the bottom diagram there or flow chart is how each application is processed. And so again, just to add some clarity to that, so there's some consistency and streamlining of, of those two processes. Um, one thing we did go back and forth on a few, for a little bit, was the subdivision and public improvement process and we sought to clarify it. That the process in Ridgeway is to start with a sketch plan that moves to a preliminary plat, that preliminary plat includes construction document approval. Then we move to the actual construction in, in development or installation of those public improvements and then the final plat. And then that's what creates buildable lots in Ridgeway. So again, we wanted to make sure that that was clear through the code requirements and in the process. Couple other, you know, somewhat significant changes as we developed, we tried to do this across the board where we could consolidate things into tables and things like that. Um, we created a table of uses and this is a sample of it. Where we have use categories all the way over on the left and then we have had uses, land uses, and then whether or not they're route allowed by right or conditional use zone district. Another big thing we did through this process was to, it's kind of big. But I guess I should say it's kind of small, but somewhat profound that we went and there was some ambiguity in the the industrial zone districts of I one and I two. So we tried, we we're recommending to change those to more traditional terminology, if you will, in light industrial and general industrial. So with that, if approved, the ordinance does also amend the zoning map. And that is not changing any boundaries of the zone districts. It's just simply changing the labels and the classifications. So again, not necessarily impactful, but hopefully clarifying the intent of those own districts to be a little bit more user friendly and clear. And then through all of these processes, I just went through all of these updates. We touched a lot of the code. Focused obviously on chapter seven, but what we also did is pulled elements of residential design standards, some of the licensing components out of both chapter six and seven, eight and made those amendments consistent as well. So say we, we pulled out the residential design standards from chapter six. So we have to amend chapter six by removing it and we inserted it into chapter seven. So it's kind of the, if you will, the donut hole, right? The inverse of what we added to chapter seven in, in both chapter six and eight. So that was really quick going through, but now kind of the process that we went through. It started back in September. We've had nine public meetings. Whether it was presentations and updates to the planning commission, who was acting as the technical advisory committee. Or we had a couple of work sessions where the public were invited specifically in January, we invited the public to have, join in on a work session. And then on May twenty third, we held a workshop specifically for developers, those who are most likely going to be working with the code to explain to them what we're doing, why we're doing it and how to navigate the new code provisions and processes. So the last time we were in front of you all was May tenth. And since then, we've made a couple of changes and just wanted to kind of, so one, we've clarified some section references on, on the outdoor lighting regulations through, and I don't think that we've done these bottom two yet, but things that will do that I would put them in, I think, the clerical or technical category of adding number of days to the, the each step in the flow charts. That was a recommendation through the development, developer's workshop on the twenty third, which was helpful. And then we've, we've actually gotten a couple of comments in about their copy and paste issues where since we have so many subdivision processes, we didn't change it from town home subdivision to condominium subdivision in kind of the, the review process or whatnot. So technical kind of things that will give the, the once final QA QC review of before we send it off to get codified. Again, not necessarily substantive. These are, these are clerical and technical corrections that we would just continue. We would just make between now and getting, getting the documents codified with MUNI code. So here we are this evening. It's kind of a little bit of, you know, moving ahead, if you will, right? We had the recommendation from planning commission, first reading with town council. Tonight's the second reading. We're working also on handouts and guides to help the public understand how to navigate the new code and the new processes. And the idea or the hope is that we'll have those completed and ready to be loaded onto the website and updated by the effective date of the, these amendments if adopted, which if adopted tonight with a thirty day notice period, we're looking at July, you know, mid-July of an effective date for these ordinances. And I don't want to get overstepped too much, but that would then basically reling which will release the, the moratorium as well. So once this, these amendments become effective. So with that, we have the recommendation to, that the town council approve ordinance oh three twenty three. Twenty twenty three, adopting the proposed amendments to chapter six, building regulations, chapter seven, planning zoning and chapter eight licensing. That was a lot in a real quick manner, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that, that you all might have at this time.
Did we have a, did we have for the developer meeting?
Yeah, good question. We, what was it? It was about ten, maybe? It, it was actually pretty good and we had some engaging conversation.
No, no big issues from them?
No. Much of it was appreciated. You know, kind of what we're trying to accomplish with it. So, so I think it's going to be appreciated.
Awesome. That's good news.
Yeah, that's really good. Thanks. Thanks, TJ. Anybody else on council have questions for either TJ or other staff? Hearing none.
One other quick question.
Go ahead.
What do we have stacking up since we've had this moratorium? Is there a bunch of stuff? Flood gates getting ready to come open?
Yeah, that's hard to answer. Tough to answer. I we get TJ and I get asked that all the time. I don't, I don't feel that the floodgates will open.
Okay.
As we all might think they, they could, but really have no idea. There have been prior to the moratorium, there were subdivision proposals and applications which we're all privy to now that, that I would characterize as coming out of would work really. Didn't have any sort of idea or inkling that they were on the horizon and then they showed up someone out of nowhere. That's my personal opinion. So that's where I I hesitate a little bit. You never really know who's out there cooking up something and have, has an idea of what to do with the parcel. But based on what I know, I, and the conversations that I've had, and I don't want to speak for TJ, but I suspect he would say something similar. We're not aware of, you know, whole lineup of folks ready to, to submit, submit something.
Okay, yeah, I, then I realized that not everybody's got their cards on the table, but I figured a few people would probably come forward and we're kind of tapping the table waiting, waiting for us to finish. So just curious what we, what we didn't know. So.
Yep. And I'll just add some two cents on the developer workshop. About ten is right, very well attended. Everyone was late, so we thought no one was going to show up. Attended about five minutes in, so. Attended about five minutes in, so thankful for that. It was a thoughtful, fruitful conversation. Wasn't a very long meeting. Again, we're at the tail end and everything's pretty, pretty well sorted out. And many of the developers that have an application somewhere in the process, somewhere in the queue were interested in some of the new application types and how they might apply to what they have going on currently. Instead of sticking to, I recall the old, old processes, which aren't really that old, but I think kind of have an idea of what I wanted to say. I also want to say, and I've taken somewhat of a backseat and, and most of this I've been immersed and participated along the way. I just want to tell TJ and Katie, if she's listening, but she's not. Katie is now the community development director with the town of Frisco, Colorado. So she's no longer a CPS, which is a huge bummer and TJ will tell you that.
So you get to see me more.
What I wanted to say though is a huge, huge thank you to TJ and Katie for all their work since September of last year. I mean, can't be understated the work that they did to help us get to this point. I also want to shout out each and every member of the planning commission for all those meetings which are hard. You know, it's not just showing up and trying to pay attention. It's doing your homework and reading the material. I mean, John and Russ here, all those meetings, trying to get prepared and it's, it can get convoluted very fast. And I very much appreciate all the attention to detail, all the thoughtful conversations. It was wonderful. I hope everyone feels that, you know, a feeling of success here because this is a huge culmination. So thank you TJ for, I think that was a great presentation. Thanks to everyone, of course, town council as well. But you all have made some efforts here too. But planning commission is that technical advisory committees in September. So thank you.
Thanks, Preston. That's huge. And TJ, please pass along my gratitude to Katie as well when you see her. And to you as well. It's, it has been, as Preston said, it's been huge. Ton of work, great process. I've said it more than once throughout the process that going into it, I was honestly a little worried about how it was going to go, a little nervous. And I think it went. It was more successful than my wildest dreams. It really was. TJ and his team did an amazing job. Planning commission really worked their butts off. I've often said the planning commission is really more work than town council. There's so much more technical knowledge involved and actual research required that it's, it's, it's a big deal. So thanks, Preston. And I just reiterate that. So back to the public hearing. Any other comments or questions from council to either TJ or staff? And if there is none, I'll open it up to public comment. Anyone in the audience, either in the room or here on Zoom have any comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back up to council to either deliberate some more or make a motion.
It's clearly been a percolating effort. Coo is everybody involved. I'm looking forward to board packets. Don't have that 150 page editor in there. And I'll move to approve ordinance number zero three dash two zero two three, chapter seven land use regulations update. Yeah, this, yeah, let's see. That's it. Second.
All right. Motion made by Terry, seconded by Russ. All in favor? Opposed? All right. Huge, huge milestone here. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Congrats, guys.
Yeah. Same to you. Thanks TJ. Have a good evening.
Thanks. You too.
All right. So that takes us to the last public hearing of the evening. Item number 14, emergency ordinance number oh five dash 2023 extending the expiration date of the San Miguel Power Association Incorporated franchise and declaring an emergency. Looks like Beau's names on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. So if I may, just a brief introduction, we have the existing franchise agreement in place with SMP. The goal was to bring you all an update or a proposed update of that franchise agreement. Haven't really had a chance to do the proper work to update it. So requesting an extension of the existing agreement with the understanding that we'll try to get you something here over the summer to review and in consideration.
Any questions for Beau from council? On this item. Hearing none, I will open it up for public comment. Anyone in the audience or on Zoom have questions or comments on this? Okay, hearing none, I will close public comment and bring it back here for discussion or vote.
I'm happy to describe what this is if anybody doesn't understand what it is. It sounds like our contract ran out. We're extending it. Please, let's hear it, Terry. Effectively, it gives San Miguel Power carte blanche easement to work our power lines throughout the town. In exchange for that, our payment in exchange for that is the process whereby we collect a franchise fee of the town's choosing to be used and remit it back to the town to be used at their discretion. So for example, San Miguel County or Tulliaride, Mountain Village, I think there's eight of them altogether. Some of them just put the money in general funds, some of them earmark the money for use for for housing or for local energy or sustainability. I believe ours just goes into the general fund at this point. So it's I crapping that wrong, but I don't think it's earmarked for anything specific.
Right.
And the amount collected is collected on individual members bills. We collect that money and then we SMP and then remit it back to the town. Wash your hands of it. Now, there's been recently, this has come to light because of an issue in Tulliaride where there's a project called a new project, a housing project. They're required that we move an overhead line on the ground hundred thousand dollars, something like that. And town chose to put the amount of that cost on the, through the franchise fee on the bills and it created a normal state by the the numbers of the town that didn't understand this. And of course they blame SMP collecting money and blah, blah, blah. And many of it was hugely our campaign to wanting that, but the towns, it was the town's choice to do that. They could have paid for that upgrade through their general fund, but they chose to actually recover the money through the franchise. Which is part of the details of the franchise. So I just thought that we hopefully understand what this is that we're talking about.
Yeah, thanks.
I think everybody should know that municipalities typically have franchise agreements with all the utilities in the community and each utility, power, gas, electric, power, power and electric, same thing. Typically have a franchise agreement. We had a franchise agreement for satellite TV at one point with Satio back in the day. And that allowed them to put their, their cable TV cables all over the town alleys and, and power poles. And then at one point we transferred that after it was abandoned to clear networks to be able to distribute fiber throughout the old part of town without having to go underground in a lot of neighborhoods. So that, that was an interesting sidebar there. I guess I have one question for Beau. Should Terry as a SMP employee, should he recuse himself from this vote?
Um, that's Terry's decision, to be honest with you. You know, I think that it's whether or not he feels like he could be impartial in that decision. I believe and correct me if I'm wrong here, Terry, that you did recuse yourself from the prior vote.
Yeah, and I'm happy to do it now.
And then if I may, Mayor, just, just one other thing. So what Terry indicated about the franchise and the franchise fee is absolutely correct in terms of it's a to pass through from SMP to the consumer. Typically, however, the goal of the franchise fee is to offset the impact of the franchise. So while it may go into the general fund, it would be to look to improve our alleys rights of way based on the installation of the utility.
Thanks for that clarification, Beau. Yeah. Okay. So, and Terry, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot. I just was curious.
That's fine.
Definitely. Unique situation there. So again, and this is another public hearing. So I want to give an opportunity for any other public comment. And hearing none, I guess I'll close the public comment period and let the board deliberate.
Seems like so.
This feels like. That being said then, I move to approve emergency ordinance number zero five two zero two three extending the expiration date of the San Miguel Power Association Incorporated franchise and declaring emergency.
Second.
All right. Motion by Beth, seconded by Russ. All in favor? Opposed or abstaining or recusing? Terry's already recused himself. Okay. Thank you. That takes care of that item and that brings us to item number, we're into policy matters now. Item number 15, interviews of youth advisor council candidates and appointment of members.
Ladies had a perfect timing.
Thank you, Mayor. So based on direction from council last fall, I think it was, we began soliciting applications from area youth for appointment to the 2023, 2024 school year town of Ridgeway Youth Advisory Council. The deadline for Seminole was the end of May, so May 31. And Riley Burr and Hannah Freed submitted complete, completed applications by that Seminole deadline. And it looks like they're here this evening. To talk with you all about being appointed to the Youth Advisory Council.
Great. Thank you guys for being here. Why don't we take, I'll just take you in the order that Preston said there alphabetically. Riley, why don't you come up to the podium and tell us a little bit about yourself and maybe what your interest is in being on the youth council?
Hey, hi. I'm Riley Burr. I'm a senior at Ridgeway. And I kind of applied last minute, which, sorry, but I didn't really know it was a thing. And Jen, the front desk lady at the school told us about it and I thought it would be a really great opportunity to, you know, be able to have an impact on my community and, you know, make a change. So, yeah.
Thank you. Anybody in council have questions for Riley?
Do you have a particular interest in any particular issue that you want to champion?
I mean, I would say like LGBT plus like safety, but I think that Ridgeway is already really great at that. And pride, like pride is happening this weekend and there are a lot of safe spaces for LGBT plus kids. So I mean, other than that, like.
What do you hope to get out of your time on the advisory council?
I hope that I can finally give back to my community. I feel like Ridgeway has like done so much. They're so so such like a really great community and I would love to be able to contribute to that.
Thanks for applying.
Yeah, of course.
Your older sibling bossy comment made me giggle.
I don't think you're bossy. I think you have leadership qualities.
Exactly.
Your sibling may be bossy, but it's great.
Thanks, Riley. So that brings up Courtney, I believe it is. Oh, sorry, Hannah.
Okay. I am also a senior at Ridgeway. My story is not much different than Riley's, also last minute. But I'm a part of several things in the school system. I'm president of NHS this year as well as president of Peace Jam. And I love Ridgeway. I moved here my sixth grade year and this community is so awesome. So I'd love to continue to build that and create that kind of love for kids. I work at Voyager right now. And I work with three to five year olds. So creating those experiences to make them love their community as much as I do is kind of what I'm wishing for. Yeah.
That's great. Thank you. People have, council have questions?
Maybe the same, same question. Do you have any particular thing that you want to try to accomplish?
Just building that kind of the love for the community and all the the youth getting more youth involved. I know that we're all kind of struggling getting younger students involved in their community and creating that passion to help others and get back. So I want to kind of advocate for that. Yeah, I guess it's it for right now.
That's a big project.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hannah. All right. Well, we have two awesome candidates. I can't imagine we don't want to appoint both of them. Preston, what, what are the we're continuing to leave that open into the fall, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll repost and leave that open through, I think, the beginning of the school year to try to capture especially once the school year starts, is try to capture more interested students.
How, and I have a question for the potential or for the applicants. How would you guys be reached most efficiently and effectively? Because we definitely want to encourage more people to be on this. And I want to do it in a way that y'all will actually see.
Can I want to piggyback a question onto that too, because it was in the same, same vein. You guys mentioned that you heard about it from somebody at the front desk at the school. Is there any way to be, to reach out to other students, some of your cohorts with social media? Instagram, whatever, that's a whole person's thing. Or whatever else, but along those lines, do you, do you think the town has an opportunity to reach you, reach out to you better as well?
We're all really passionate about this. So I think the best way to kind of raise awareness of like being a council is like to actually come into the school and have a little presentation. Because I have no idea what you guys do or what you're expecting. So kind of just, there's plenty of leaders within the school for getting the word out and kind of telling them what you are expecting. Kind of put it out there more. I like the social media idea. Well, it's like the town of Ridgeway has Instagram.
Is Instagram still a thing that? They don't joust. They just follow people.
We, we can have Preston make a TikTok, can't we? Well, that, that's a given, but yeah. JT, do you have a follow up?
One other thing to let you guys know, since you're approaching us here at council, all of us serve on different committees as well. There's a whole range, like sustainability advisory board is a committee I serve on, and we would love to have a youth presence as well. And have, have a way to be able to communicate within the schools and happy to come talk to the school as well. And I think everybody else would be similar, have similar sentiment for the committees they serve on. And all that stuff is on our, on our webpage.
Great point, JT. Thank you. Yeah. So I think, I mean, it's obvious that we need to maybe get with Susan Lacy and maybe the counselor at the school and make sure that the word is getting out a little more widely at school. So kids aren't just hearing about it from the front desk lady.
I also wonder if this isn't a place to reach out to Craig Sperman. Since this is really civics related and maybe working with him to get a presentation happening to those kind of upper level classes where we're targeting those students.
Well, that reminds me that there was a time not long ago when council would go to the school once a year and, and have sort of a Well, that reminds me that there was a time not long ago when council would go to the school uh once a year and, and have sort of a um, uh, what do you call it? A meeting, basically a, a gathering, what do they call it?
Our Youth Advisory Council is sitting with us at the same time together? An awesome thing to bring back. I mean, just my personal opinion.
Yeah, lots of good ideas. Um, well, back to the, the action at hand. I think uh we should um probably without question uh appoint these two wonderful candidates and then uh look into trying to get some more for next fall.
I move to appoint Riley Burr and Hannah Freed to Ridgway's Youth Advisory Council for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
All right, motion's made and seconded. All in favor? Opposed? None? Welcome aboard, ladies. Tell your friend, get, get them to, to their application in as well. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to, unless there's anything else on that item. Item number sixteen, ordinance number oh four dash twenty twenty-three, repealing emergency ordinance number oh one, twenty twenty-two and the temporary moratorium on the acceptance of development applications. Preston?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So this says a little bit more of what you just heard, it's got seven updates. So now that that project to update the, the town's land use regs uh has uh essentially concluded with the public hearing and second reading now being behind us, uh staff is recommending adopting this ordinance uh informally repealing emergency ordinance zero one dash twenty twenty-two and the temporary moratorium on the acceptance of development applications that that ordinance enacted. Uh, this would be first reading um of this particular ordinance. Uh, the public hearing and second reading would be scheduled for next month, uh provided that it's approved tonight. Uh, next month's meeting is on July twelfth, uh twenty twenty-three. Uh, it, the one thing TJ uh brought it up, the chapter seven uh update ordinance that you've all just approved on second reading will take effect thirty days from today, which would be about July fourteenth. Um, this ordinance wouldn't take effect uh if approved on first and second reading, second reading in July until about August twelve, so it doesn't really jive and mesh based on you know, this ordinance wouldn't jive with the other one that was just approved. And so I think it would be helpful to hear from Bo maybe on on when the moratorium would technically be, be lifted, given that uh given what was written in the emergency ordinance zero one dash twenty twenty-two, uh cause even I'm a little bit accused, but I think we want to go through this formality of, of rescinding that uh temporary moratorium.
Yeah, and thank you. And, and I, I would um, just take the position that frankly, we, we can rescind. Now, we can rescind with an emergency. If we're accepting new applications, it would be under the, the new code. Um, Colorado's got the, the pending ordinance doctrine, so the, the fact that we've got this, this code provision that will become effective uh in, in July wouldn't preclude uh the town from res- uh rescinding as a, whatever the effective date and then um accepting applications. And, and, and that being said, the other aspect that the council could consider is it could be a um rescinding the moratorium on a date, so and you guys could, you know, put a motion uh together with respect to the approval in terms of the specific date that you would like to, to rescind.
Does everybody uh get the nuances of those choices? Anybody have any thoughts on which one they'd like to approach?
Well, it seems appropriate to go ahead and rescind and have it jive up with, with the new codes in effect, so. If we can do that via emergency ordinance on the rescind, rescinding then uh that seems the way to go to me.
Okay. Um, there's also the thing that, that Bo just mentioned that because the state recognizes um pending legislation, I don't think, even if somebody comes in before it's actually um enacted in July, we'd still be reviewing it under the new code. So it, I think either can work. Um, whatever anybody's most comfortable with, go ahead and make motion. Actually, before we do that, let's make sure we don't have any other uh interested parties in the audience, either on Zoom or in the room that want to ask questions or have comments. Okay, hearing none, go ahead.
So I'm a little confused. This is the first reading. What is the motion do?
This is the second.
No, this is, this is a first reading. So, uh, so what if we, sorry if I was a little unclear in my explanation. But if, if it's approved this evening on first reading and theory on second reading, July twelfth. Uh, standard ordinances don't take effect until thirty days after approved on second reading, which would put it in like August twelfth. Which doesn't jive with what you've all just approved in the chapter seven update. So I think what Bo was, was uh saying, really good point. Um, I think I, I would recommend that we pinpoint a specific date for this ordinance to take effect if though, I guess, help me think this through. If, if that date is, as I think Russ was opining July fourteen, July fourteenth, that could work well, given that the next council meeting is on July twelfth.
Right. And so what we would do is basically introduce it tonight and then it would be like adopted as an emergency uh on the twelfth, if you will, so.
So if it's going to be adopted as emergency on the twelfth. Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
That, that's a good point. We can either, we can either just table it and adopt it as emergency next month or we can introduce it tonight and, and adopt it as emergency next month as well. It does, either works and I don't think it's I don't think it's a big deal either way, so. What do we guys want to do?
So we could just go ahead and do it now, set the approval date as emergency, set the approval date for the fourteenth and have it do it all now and not have to do it next month anymore.
No, I'm sorry, unfortunately, because it, it wasn't uh on the agenda as an emergency. We, we can't adopt it as an emergency tonight, so.
Yeah, can't, can't do it as an emergency tonight, so.
We can table it tonight and do it as an emergency. It's a matter of making sure we got the eyes across the trees and I get that, so.
But e- either way works, but um it's fine to just table it and then pass it as an emergency next month. Any other comments, questions? Is there a motion to table?
A motion to table.
All right, motion made by Polly, seconded by Russ. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. That was fun. Um. That takes us to item number seventeen, ordinance number twenty-three dash oh nine, adopting the URA and Samuel County Regional Climate Action Plan. Is Emma in the room or on Zoom?
I am on Zoom.
Emma, welcome.
How's it going? Thank you so much for having me. And so just a quick introduction to this item, we're requesting that each of the government members of the Snuffles Energy Board formally adopt the Regional Climate Action Plan. Doing so helps to affirm each of the government's commitment to implementing environmentally sustainable actions um and collaborating towards both our regional and individual jurisdictional uh climate goals. We're really excited to have the plan completed with support from all of you and from the Snuffles Energy Board this past year. Um, and are excited to focus on implementation and how we can support the town council moving forward in implementing the actions included in this plan.
That's great. Thanks, Timon. Um, you guys all have the plan in your packet. Um, I'll open it up for questions for Emma from council.
Not a question, but I did want to jump in, just said, I wanted to give the council background that um with Sustainability Advisory Board, we've spent quite a bit of time uh with EcoAction Partners going through their tracking um program. Um, basically going down into the weeds of every element of the cap. Um, and all of those details are available and well annotated um through all of the different categories from energy to land use. Um, and all of that stuff is available to you guys as well. It's, it's worth the review as well and um know that the effort that they put into it has been also monumental. Um, and it's in the document on the tracking also is not just for the town of Ridgway. It's for the entire region and all the other municipalities. Um, so if you want to see how other towns are approaching it, um, that's on there as well. Um, and it's a lot of information. There's been a lot of heavy lifting on that and I encourage all of you to, um, to dig into that as well. Um, because it gives a great perspective on everything happening um in the whole region, really. So kudos to you. Thanks, Emma.
Thank you.
Now, I'll add to that, that the municipalities in play are in the counties of URA and Samuel County. There's currently an effort to um get grant funding to include San, San Juan County and San Miguel County to San Juan County and Silverton. If the grant money comes through to have them join the effort as well and bring them into the poll, there's probably enough attendings to the existing document, general will be this due to be fully refurbished for another ten years. Is that, is that right, Emma? Is that the approach?
Yeah, I think that sums it up pretty well.
Which would broaden the region participation.
That's great, Terry. Thanks. I didn't know that. That's good news. Um. Other comments, questions, either from counselors or in the audience? This is, as JT mentioned, this is a monumental amount of work. I was involved in the very, very beginning of this process and it's been really, uh, really rewarding to see it move forward and get to this point, quite honestly, so. I think it's really amazing that we're finally at this point where we can adopt it. So hearing no other comments, no hands raised, somebody ready to make a motion?
I'll move to um approve resolution number twenty-three oh nine.
Just, just the uh, the capital letters at the top.
A resolution of the town council, the town of Ridgway, Colorado, adopting the URA and Samuel County Regional Climate Action Plan. Seconded.
Thank you. Uh, motion made by Russ, seconded by JT, I believe. Uh, all in favor? Opposed? There you go. Thanks for being here, Emma. Okay. Moving right along, that takes us to item number eighteen, consideration of a fee waiver request from the Home Trust of URA County related to the Ridgway duplex project at Lot Six Parkside subdivision. Preston?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, we do have Alowski, uh, the Home Trust of URA County here to talk to the request a little bit. Uh, I'll let her talk first before I talk.
Sure. Hi, everyone. Um, so uh we are moving forward on our duplex in Parkside, super exciting. Um, we're partnered with uh Clonestus with Onsite Construction to do, to BRGC and then Habitat for Humanity uh on the home buyer selection process. Um, so I think it's a really awesome um partnership, um three-way. Um, we uh have come up with uh the funding necessary to complete the project. We're currently going through the underwriting process with the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority uh for our construction loan. Um, it's great. Their construction loans are at four point five percent. So it's really helpful. I read a little bit counts. Um, and then we are in process with um DOL for the hundred thousand in gap funding. But they need the commitment from CHAPA uh first before we can move forward on that, so. Um. Do you guys have any uh questions um that I could answer?
Yeah, um, so when you say that these units are going to be available to households making a hundred percent of a rating, is that at least a hundred percent? Is that eighty to a hundred? Just because this has been kind of the ongoing uh hair pulling out moment of affordable housing lately is how do we come to those numbers?
Yeah, so basically, um, we've come up with the, the funding um that does not include the construction loan. So it's basically the home buyers are going to have to be able to, to cover that eight hundred thousand construction loan. So that gives a mortgage of about just over four hundred thousand. So that brings us to about a hundred percent AMI. Um, so, so that's what we're aiming for. Um, is that, that income level?
So I, I guess my question is going to be, is that this is open to people making up to a hundred and twenty-five percent of the AMI?
Well, it's, it's open to people up to a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Okay, that was, that's the, I guess that was what I was, is it the floor or the cap?
It's always the cap.
That's, that's time of closing on today's.
Yes, yeah.
Other questions?
Not so much for Andrea, but do we know what, that's kind of, there's Preston's dream in my mind, what's that you have?
Yeah, so just uh on the screen, uh, John, can you see the screen?
Uh, yes.
Uh, just wanted to, this type of slide should look familiar, not too far removed from the uh Ridgway Whiterhorn Home uh waiver request, but the home trust request is very similar. We're talking building permit and plan check fees. That number's estimated. Uh, Mike Gil crunch some numbers based on evaluation after talking with Clonestus. Uh, water and sewer tap fees, uh got those from Pam based on what's already been paid for with uh at the time of uh subdivisions, so those are the amounts remaining. Uh, development excise tax, once the units are uh kind of made, kind of minimized, uh which would take place right off the bat. Uh, and I think the goal's to pull a permit this fall or uh late summer or fall, right? Uh, so three thousand for the development excise tax eventually, uh and then equipment labor for uh uh water meter and MXU uh for three quarter inch lines. That's, I'm sorry. That's the amount there, total of uh just about twenty-three thousand dollars. So just want, want to try to make it as comprehensive as possible about what we're looking at.
And do we know what reaction we have in, in our budget in affordable housing or?
Uh, remaining in that.
Question. And with the certain twenty twenty-three budget or is this in twenty twenty-four?
This would be uh in the twenty twenty-three budget provided, or at least the, the large majority of this, uh depending on when the permits will.
Pam, do you know?
Um, there's nothing left. Because I, what I've been doing is I've been charging the things that you weigh to the line item. So the line item won't be actually over vested.
Okay, so as a Wheterhorn, you have to go all that in.
And do we know, are we gonna have any other considerations like this coming up this year?
Uh, it's not that, not that I foresee. Looking forward, if we had a um, a ballot initiative, as we're, as we're going to discuss here, would would there be revenue coming in this fiscal year to refill some of the coffees?
No, because that, that would have to get voted on. That, that managing tax would have to be included. Yeah, and it's, it only depend if we decided to do some other sort of affordable housing income this year.
I, I also just want to throw out that, yes, that line item is exhausted. But I would definitely expect that we would look at finding eleven thousand dollars per unit to help bring this to fruition. So we can get way in the weeds on how we're going to do that. Uh, but I would suggest that we ask Preston and Pam to look at the budget and, and bring that to us rather than us just guessing. And I feel like we're gonna support this, so that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, and just one last thing, you know, the uh, that's a great point that uh I feel comfortable speak for Pam, but I would suspect she feels the same, the budget didn't accommodate granting waiver requests. I forgot what the other thing was, but, but I'm gonna say that.
Can I ask another nuts and bolts question? It's so on the, on the water tap fee and the sewer tap fee with the balances remaining. Um, and, cause I don't know the total cost for a multi-unit like this. What are the, what are the typical numbers for multi-units for each of those?
Well, for, for a duplex building, Pam can explain this better than I can, for a duplex, for a standard duplex that uh that is owned by the same property owner, there's a formula for, I think, is it point seven two?
The second tap.
For the second tap?
First tap is at the full cost, which is six thousand, right now, six thousand for water and six thousand for sewer. The second tap would be at point seventeen.
Percent of that.
Right.
And then even if it's condos after the fact, once they've paid for the taps and their brand, their CEO, they don't have to pay that.
The escalator, I, we were trying to decipher the code, the code, we can use a lot of cleanup in a lot of areas. That was one where I think we need to get some clarity.
Let's get some clarity before they go to condo. Whatever, whatever the word is.
So am I hearing, I'm hearing a little consensus that we want to support this, my hearing, bro?
I'm in, I'm in agreement.
Yeah.
In this.
That's, that's the general consensus here here, coming up with something.
Okay. And we basically just rely on staff to, to figure out how to make it work in the budget. Preston told us he's, he's comfortable finding find a place to make it work. And then we'll continue our discussion on other ways to raise funds for this kind of thing. Any other comments from people in the audience or on Zoom? Comments, questions? Okay, hearing none. Somebody want to make a motion? Thanks, Andrea.
Thank you, guys.
I move to approve the wave, the building permit, tap fee, waiver request for the Home Trust of Huray County.
All right. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item number nineteen, which is resolution number twenty-three dash ten, extending the receipt of waste refuse and recycling services from Bruin Waste Management. This is renewing their contract, right?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to let Bo take this one.
Thank you, Preston. So thank you, Mayor. Preston brought it to my attention that we have a services agreement with Bruin Waste Management that's scheduled to expire in July. And so the goal is to continue those services through October, allowing for the town to put an RFP in place to see if there's anybody else that is willing to put forth a proposal to provide the same. So we'd keep the existing services agreement in place with Bruin Waste Management and then open it up for proposals between now and in October.
Okay, does that make sense to everybody?
Does anybody have a question? We'll just stay at the same rate that we currently have.
Yes, all of the contract, that's a great question. Mayor Pro Tem, all of the contract terms would remain the same.
I got no issues with that.
Remind me, wasn't there a discussion previously about expanded composting in the region? And if, if so, would that be an amendment to the contract going forward?
Frankly, that would probably be a component of, of a new professional services agreement. So if council would like to give direction to staff to evaluate composting services as a component of putting this RFP out there, we can, we can certainly take that direction. But as it is right now, this extension is for the recycling and, and waste removal that we currently receive from, from waste, from Bruin Waste Management.
Yeah, and JT, I believe that Bruin is taking some actions to explore, including composting in their services. And we've heard a little bit about that in a couple of channels, but I agree with Bo that that most likely would be part of a, a larger contract renewal in October, either with Bruin or, or another vendor.
That, that cleared it up for me. I just didn't want to get into a situation where all of a sudden we were approving one and then having to reamend it and renegotiate it after it was approved.
Right. Other comments, questions, either from counselor or from the audience? Okay, let's have motion.
Move to approve resolution number twenty-three dash ten between the town of Ridgeway and Bruin Waste Management.
Seconded.
All right, motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Another unanimous vote. Thank you. That takes us to item number twenty. No, sorry. Yes, let's take a side of number twenty. Notice of the award for the athletic park master plan project. Preston?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So as, as all of you know, we issued an RFP for the master plan for Ridgeway Athletic Park Project. And in May, bids were due on June second, the town received four bids and all the four bids we received were from SCJ Studio, Logan Simpson, Connect One Design, and DHM Design. After a very thoughtful collective conversation that took place after the selection committee members had their individual review of, of the four proposals, the selection committee is collectively recommending that the town enter into a professional services agreement with DHM Design for the project. Just for everyone, for context, the selection committee was Eric Clark, Deborah Overton, myself, Holly was invited, but unable to attend, that's okay. Sue Berry and Josie Scoville. So a pretty good representation there. DHM again is being recommended. They're based in Durango. A lot of us have pretty, pretty good familiarity with their work over the last several years. They've done wonderful work about the town. They have an intimate knowledge of the town based on that work, the related experience that they portrayed in their proposal definitely hit on what we were looking for. There was some great experience with some of the other firms too, but again, DHM came out on top collectively and feeling that they're a good fit to, to take on the project. Town did set aside about forty thousand dollars in this year's budget for this specific project. The bid came in just under that amount. There were some assumptions in DHM's proposal that, that we've been having conversations with them about to make sure that the assumptions were a bit incorrect. So having conversations with them to, to, to get appropriate amounts based on correcting those assumptions. So we're having those conversations now. And having her back on what those adjustments may be. But again, DHM design at this point is the recommendation from the selection committee. Sue, obviously not here now, she just left. John, do you have anything to add?
The only thing I would add is that, just for everybody's information, we, the town has, as Preston mentioned, a long relationship with DHM. In my experience, going all the way back to prior to two thousand and six, when they did the original downtown revitalization plan, I I should share that with you guys sometime. It's pretty interesting to see what was drawn back, drawn up way back in two thousand and five, two thousand and six for the plan that was eventually implemented through the ramp project. So we've worked with, with Walker and his team at DHM for, for many, many years now. They know Ridgeway inside and out, and I think they'll do a great job. Well, anybody have any other questions or comments on that?
We have one from the audience. Tony, please come up.
Hi, in number four, it, there, it says that in the plan, certain amenities and uses, uses should be considered. And I was wondering why, like, the skateboard park was not, like, listed under there? Because open space was and soccer field and some other things that were there. And so it feels like that should be added. And there are some people, and I haven't heard recent discussions, so I'm not sure where they're at. But there's some people, of course, who would like either that either renovated or expanded. So that's why I would appreciate if you put in that list skateboard park or skateboard area. So that could be, and it's not just skateboard, other people use it as well, but that could be considered.
And just, I'll talk to that, that list is not comprehensive by any means. It was taken purely out of RFP, but absolutely what all the big older groups notified and resonated throughout the public engagement process. So. Good call, Tony.
Yeah, thanks, Tanya, but I, I think that will be, that will be part of the, the plan. Part of the review. Other comments, questions? Okay, hearing none.
I move to authorize staff to enter into a professional services agreement with DHM Design for the Ridgeway Athletic Park Master Plan Project.
Seconded.
All right, motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimously. Thank you very much. That takes us to item number twenty-one, discussion regarding dedicated revenue source to address housing challenges, revisiting this topic once again. Preston, why don't you lead us off?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I don't have too much to add outside of, well, memo. As a result of last month's work session, it was a really great conversation, some really good direction. The direction was as follows, focus on an increase to the lodging tax rate of six percent. Had a split of either sixty, forty, or fifty fifty, meaning sixty percent to tourism promotion and forty percent to affordable housing, or fifty percent to tourism promotion and fifty percent to affordable housing. Second piece of direction, I, I heard was apply the increased tax rates to revenues from years immediately preceding fiscal year twenty twenty, COVID nineteen pandemic. So we looked at years twenty seventeen through twenty nineteen in order to see what would have been generated. The memo has those amounts. Hopefully there's not any typos. But that was the direction. So at this point, staff is looking for some additional direction. And just as a reminder, I've said it a number we've said it a number of times now, to submit a ballot question to hold a special municipal election with the county in November. We would need to submit a notice of intent to county clerk and reporter's office by the end of July, July twenty eighth. The title and content for ballot issue would need to be finalized and approved via revolution and issued to the county before September eighth this year. I'll turn it over to you all.
Thank you for getting the past years and the spreadsheets are not your
All that spreadsheet work, good job.
Thank you so much for that. It is enlightening to see those numbers as well. I just want to, again, say definitely six percent at fifty fifty. That seems like it's not taking anything away from the horizon budget. The numbers are not going down for them. And the tap fees that keep coming up, the sewer fees that keep coming up, the promotion of workforce housing is incredibly important. And that was just demonstrated again this evening. So I'm, I'm very much of the mind of six percent minimum at fifty fifty.
I think six percent keeps us aligned with other municipalities and jurisdictions in the area. It isn't going to put our lodging providers at a disadvantage.
What if we, just off the top of our heads, kind of doled out this year, sort of affordable housing in terms of tap fees? The number's gotta be big. Is it two hundred grand?
I think we did about two hundred grand with Waterhorn.
It's almost sixty-two thousand. So it's a hundred, hundred and sixty-eight thousand for those fourteen units that but I just had twenty-three that we just did.
And I think it's, it's important to remember that that's gonna vary year to year. Waterhorn was a big bite of the apple at once, but we've also talked about this revenue stream in conjunction. It's weather stopped, but this is the one that I think our voters are gonna support. I think you would take this to our community and say, this is a thing we need to do.
I was gonna burst the subject kind of on, on the other side of the same point, the way you just asked the question about how much have we spent? I've really struggled with having these ad hoc requests for exceptions without having a dedicated line item for those, so we can, and so we have, we come into these situations in the meeting and then have to make the exception out, knowing how much total we've already spent per annum. And I, I, I really, I don't know if it's possible to even make a motion that we don't for the rest of the year, already knowing that we're only just exiting the first, you know, quarter of the fiscal year and not having any money to quote Pam in the budget for these things. I want, I want to see a, a category so that we can, we can plan accordingly. And that doesn't speak to my I don't say that because I'm adverse to these projects. I want to be the train moving on affordable housing projects. But at the same time, for instance, say another organization comes up that's not the housing trust and starts coming to us. And right now, we're just funding this one organization, which we believe in their mission, but to be able to to know what lens we're looking through every time we have to consider this, especially on, on water and sewer fees, which are and I've used the expression before that I consider the blue chip, top shelf resources that are not just big revenue monies for us, but also resources that are very important. And their importance shouldn't be ignored as if it's just a throwaway opportunity to lower the price tag on an affordable housing project of anybody's creation.
To be fair, I don't think anyone's treating them that way. I think this council is actually in my tenure, worked really hard to make sure we are collecting water and sewer tap fees. We haven't historically just waived them. That has actually come around in the last year, year to, really with Waterhorn, that we were able to waive them. And that's put us in a great position when it comes time to apply for DOL grants for water and sewer improvements because we have money in those funds. I would never, though, want to say anything in this discussion that would dissuade a developer of affordable housing from approaching us throughout the rest of this fiscal year.
Yeah, I also don't want, I also don't want anybody that has the tag not to diminish it of affordable housing to come to us and think that it's a pasture and that it's gonna be a given that they get it.
Well, we can have that discussion on each one. But again, I, I want to just be really clear. If someone wants to go more affordable housing, please come talk to us. Have that conversation, open that door.
Sure, I'm just talking to the mechanics of it. Certainly make it easier for all of us if we do what our piggy bank looks like.
Sure. And if I can just add, I mean, we're talking about revenues and not expenditures. And I know I've said this before, but Pam and I have very thoughtful conversations during the budget cycle, sitting with Mike Gill, TJ, about what we project for, for tap fees and all the different revenue streams that we have in our portfolio. And, you know, for Waterhorn Homes, we, we knew that was coming to preliminary plat. They were gonna ask for a waiver of everything. We anticipated that. We didn't budget any of those any of those fees coming in as, as revenues, if that makes sense. So we, we planned accordingly in that sense. We didn't anticipate Home Trust of Huray County, the other community land trust model, that they were gonna be ready for their duplex project, which it sounds like they are, which is wonderful. But we didn't, we didn't project that. So I'm just trying to add some context on, you know, every, every August, September, October, we do our best to try to have some foresight and understand what's on the horizon, but you know, not every affordable housing developer is, is raising their hand and said, this is the idea. So you never know what's gonna happen.
Well, and Home Trust actually has another project in the pipe. I don't know how close that is to coming alive, but
And big dog.
Yeah, yeah, we do know that's kind of, so. Yeah, and I, I agree with you. I think it'd be good that we did refund or and but, you know, at the same time, like Beth was saying, if the Terrorite Foundation walks in here and wants to throw fourteen homes at us, I don't think we just send them away necessarily either. So I think we look at that on a case by case as it comes up. But yeah, I would like to make sure that we've got some money to fund these things in the future.
That's kind of, that was my question was, was that, you know, these, these asks are gonna keep coming and then they've taken items. They've taken items, right? I would like to see. Affordable housing funded, funded really well, you know, whatever we can possibly do.
By, by having that category, it incentivizes any developer that would come to us. To look at ways to accommodate what the community needs. On those, those levels, by seeing that, those monies there, and, you know, to use John's line of. Make it, um, make it easy to do the things that we want them to do and make it difficult for things that we don't necessarily wanna see developed here. And so by having that category there that's transparent and overt, I mean, we can champion. It makes it easier for us on a case by case decision to, to get behind that.
Just to take a quick tack based on Polly's original suggestion, because we can go way deeper than weeds on our philosophy on. How we're going to sell this to the public and explain what we're using it for and how we're hoping it's gonna incentivize. What do we think about the six percent at fifty fifty?
I'm in agreement, six percent.
By coming back up to, as far as stuff, I'll say I keep back to the table. On that, knowing that Chamber wouldn't lose. You know, their, their vast tax funds.
Still getting it.
Yeah, they're, they're going, they're going slightly up.
And slightly up, um, because I, given the thirty thousand foot view of the economy right now, I was not. Ready to go to the voters and ask for any kind of tax increase of any sort, but this, I feel like tempers it out. Um, and then to go to your point as far as the language. And to be really clear about it, you know, going towards, uh, the workforce, affordable housing. Because that's gonna present some challenges. I, there's a lot of people that. Uh, in the community that have come to me more conservative than I am and said that they. They don't like where this affordable housing. You know, uh, train is gone. Which has been, it caught me off guard. It makes me think that they're, to understand that philosophy is very difficult to mine.
I, I think what's interesting about your, your comment about the economy, I was thinking about today on my run. In the event that, with your experience of downturn in the economy, our local businesses are still gonna wanna operate. They're gonna be, you know, trying to cut hours, they're gonna be trying to get staff, but they're still gonna need staff. And so I understand the hesitations, I understand the worries, um. But stepping back at this point is like gonna serve us.
Can I interrupt for a second? Jake's got his hand up for a while. He's been very patient. Jake, what, what would you like to add?
Hi, thanks. Um, wanted, as we get closer to the point where, um, actual language has to be composed. For a ballot question, um, wanna remind you that, um, we are allowed to use, um. Uh, the, uh, the lodging tax for not just affordable housing, but also childcare. And that is a simultaneous conversation that's happening. Uh, there is a year, there is a, uh, childcare work group. Um, that has been meeting, and, um, I'd like you to consider. Uh, when drafting language to potentially include not just affordable housing as one of the uses, but also childcare. Cause I'd like you to imagine a day in ten or twenty years when we have all of our affordable. Uh, housing built and we are looking to perhaps subsidize childcare. Uh, that would just add some increased flexibility. I'd hate in ten or twenty years to say, to have the conversation, dang, I wish. Uh, we had the ability to use this, these funds for childcare in addition to affordable housing. Um, so just asking you to also consider, um, childcare as, as a use when you compose ballot language.
Thanks, Jake. All right, so back to the discussion at hand. Um, I, I think I heard, um. At least, uh, three of you support, um, Polly's original suggestion. What are the rest of you think?
I didn't say I did, but I did.
So just to be clear, it's, it's six percent fifty fifty.
That's what I, those last, that's maybe I still stand by that.
JT, what was, what is the, you had at the last meeting, you had some, and you had. Some information from somebody, tell us what we should use as predictors. And look back for this coming year.
Um, I was looking at nineteen or. Yeah, yeah. So we were talking about using the fiscal, uh, comps of pre-pandemic numbers. Um, because bookings and service, although things are, you know, it's a challenging world right now, things are favoritizing. So all of a sudden, things are, um, are, uh, bookings are going up now that we're into the summer. Um, but in terms of like watching just general Fed stuff, um, you know, they didn't raise the interest rates yesterday. Um, so that gave another thirty thousand foot view of, uh, the temperature of where things are headed. Um, it's just that those people are weighing things in, given inflation, um, you see, and, 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 uh. Oh, just the cost of everything going up as well. Uh, so things were tempered, so it just was a hard year to gauge. Asking voters to incur a taxation. But, um, this would be going to two thousand twenty-four, but it's, it's just taking the temperature of whether people want it, whether they want it or not.
Luckily, sorry not to interrupt you, but luckily, we're not really asking. The people of our town to give us more, we're asking the visitors to spend a little bit. We're asking tourists to spend a little bit more. So it's not. Unless they're, you know, doing this vacation, in which case like, they're dreams. I love that for you, but also you're encouraging, you're encouraging that. You're making that choice.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking the temperature, just consumers, all of us across the board.
Totally.
On that, but. That isn't necessarily coming out of. Ridgway, you rate county residents per se.
Yeah, I, I guess what I was trying to look at is what, what kind of impact this does. Um, to Chamber, if we're looking at twenty nineteen numbers.
But again, the, looking at any individual year. If we assume that the economy fluctuates, looking at any individual year, I would encourage us. Thank you, Preston, for putting this together, but right now the chamber is getting two point four five percent of long taxes. Or, oh, oh, sorry, no, two point four five percent of the cost of a room. Okay? Under a fifty fifty proposal at six percent, they will get three percent of everywhere. So we could do nothing. And if the economy goes down, they will get less money. It will, in fact, get slightly more money than they otherwise would. Under a current proposal. So it would just, I, I would just encourage us to. Not get bogged down in trying to project the actual economy, because. Right now, like you said, it's fluctuating and it's really hard to tell. Their actual percentage collected on each room will be higher under this proposal.
True, true. And this is one mechanism, it's one mechanism among, hopefully many that we adopt. With our, the childcare, affordable housing in mind, and, and, and that's why it's a fifty fifty, not a eleven. I'm keen to move forward on that and completely with that, bring in, with the right. Composition, going to the voters and asking for that for two thousand twenty-four change.
So what if we said we wanted to go six percent fifty fifty and ask staff to write us up a ballot?
I do like Jinx.
I like Jinx.
Although I have, I have a little bit of reservation with Jake's suggestion and that it may create expectations that they're gonna use that money. For, um, childcare, you know.
I think it's just you're working at and saying, we can do this, because we're asking for it for a specific reason.
Do we approve that? I think, I, I think we should consider the language.
Yeah.
In. Have staff consider the language, have voters consider the language, look at comps from other proposals that have gone to the voters and see. How that looks, because there might be other things that are in our blind spot right now as well that need to be embedded into that.
Yeah, and, and, and I, I'm not against that idea, but I think it's not a really working word crafting as well. Because, I mean, Colorado isn't for us for multiple taxes, and granted, we've already got it at three point five percent. And even though it's not our local people paying those taxes, they still want us not to approve it. And so. I wanna keep this as crafting appropriately, and our, our primary intent is to see affordable housing. Not saying that we're not gonna look at other things as well. But it's a, it's a big word crafting issue to make sure.
And, and in that word crafting, it could be that you could look at, um. Childcare and affordable housing, put them under the banner of workforce, supporting workforce, right? Supporting childcare is supporting workforce.
Blowing those lines, but I think we just, we trust staff to work that up for us, so.
And, and drive the conversation, I'm speaking up for the plain deals, um, drive that conversation further. I mean. Of course, you don't wanna bring a ballot that you know is gonna lose, right? I'd have enough confidence that the, that it's a ripe enough topic that it'll drive even more robust conversation at the fifty fifty mark. And send it to the voters, test it, and then we can also see how. That would indicate to other mechanisms that we might have in mind for affordable housing, childcare, ecological fund.
Well, I, I, if I could throw in, I, I'm nervous, I'd be very nervous to, uh. Incorporate what you might call mission creep into the wording of this. I, I'm totally in favor of including. Uh, childcare, because I think it's a critical component of, of the workforce needs issue. But starting to expand that and including other stuff is just, it's, that's a really dangerous.
Are you speaking to my comment about the ecological? Is that, is that what you're saying?
You weren't suggesting.
No, 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 I'm talking, in general, I'm talking about in something separate.
Well, and, and I just think, I, I, I would like us to keep it to workforce housing and childcare and not. Um, explore other options, because I just think it's a dangerous, um, exercise that could get us into more murky water. That's, that's just.
We agree, John.
I agree. I think you had misinterpreted me on that.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood.
If anything, I'm working, I'm along with Terry's line of thinking that even just. Um, tagging on the childcare unless it's well crafted.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And how, how those two are, are, are bound together so importantly for that. Age group and demographic and area median income, absolutely. The other stuff I was talking about was just. Other down the line stuff.
Gotcha, okay.
Also the community.
The only reason I would, would encourage us to include childcare, because I like very clear message of this is for affordable housing. The only reason that I would say we want to include childcare is a lot of our two earner households. Are only going to qualify to purchase affordable housing. If they have childcare. And so I think childcare and housing are so linked. Then I would be okay with that. Um, the clearest message is this is for affordable housing. But Jake does really raise a key point, um, and I just wanna throw that out to staff. I don't really have an answer for you on where I come down on that.
Could be.
Workwise, workforce, workforce, for, for housing and childcare.
As defined as housing.
So basically what I'm hearing is we're looking at six percent fifty fifty, and we're gonna let staff craft us a. A fine ballot proposal, then we get a little bit of support.
Yep, thank you, Russ. So I'll just, uh, I'll add on to that. So what I'm hearing. Uh, hopefully we get a lot of head nods, is submit a notice for intent to county.
Yep, yes.
Uh, craft a ballot title and content for consideration at next month's meeting, including, uh, our childcare component in that language. Just to start, and at six percent, and to start at six percent at fifty fifty split.
That's what I've heard.
Yeah, a series of anonymous editorials from the plain dealer.
If, if there is a consensus, I would prefer a motion to that effect.
I move to direct staff to form language for the ballot, including childcare and workforce housing. With a taxing increase to six percent, splitting the money is fifty fifty. Is that?
And submit a notice of intent to the county.
And submit a notice of intent to the county.
Nicely done, Polly. Motion. Seconded by Russ. Um, any other discussion? I probably didn't give adequate, uh, opportunity for public comment, um. But I think it's too late for that. What we can.
We got some thumbs up.
Okay. All right, great. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, nice work, everybody. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Preston, for your hard work on that. It's been a, a long, uh, road, but I, I feel good about where we're headed.
And then, well. Later we'll have follow-up meetings on the other two. Um, the mitigation and the.
Uh, the. mitigation, the, uh, and the inclusion is on.
Inclusion is on, yeah.
Gotcha.
We'll do that later.
Yeah.
Not too much later, but someone soon.
Not tonight.
Not tonight, Josephine, as they say. Um, all right, that was a good discussion. Um. That takes us to written and verbal reports. Um, we got the town manager's report today. I haven't had a chance to look at it in much detail. Preston, anything you wanna highlight?
Yes, sir, please. A couple of things that aren't even in, in the report, reminder that, uh. Uh, well, actually, Tanya, before you leave, we have brand new, uh, signs down at Rollins Park.
I, I can download, they're beautiful.
Good.
I wanna make sure to read them.
People can actually, um, there are signs, uh, urging caution around the river, especially during high water times. And Tanya pointed out that the signs that have been there for obviously a long time were faded, can't even read them.
Yeah.
So we got, we got new signs, so that's good.
Quick action.
Thank you.
That was very quick, Preston. Good work.
Um, the, uh, Ridgway Waterhorn Homes, uh, lottery drawing is tomorrow afternoon, or tomorrow at noon. We need, the lottery has to be conducted in a formal meeting of the Ridgway Workforce and Affordable Housing Committee, hoping at least four. Seems silly actually, but it seems. You need four members for a quorum, call the meeting to order, and then it's just a lottery after that.
So, well, is water available?
I initially confirmed, but I. So, so.
So we've got three, and he's a possible four. May I have to zoom in? Or is it zoomable?
It's zoomable, okay, yes. So that's, you said, yes.
Maybe it's happening here.
It's happening here.
I'll be working on the stage, so probably yes.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
I'm in, I'm in.
We're good, great. Just a reminder, thank you.
Sounds like, sounds like we have a quorum.
Yes. Uh, Space Gray Lock Party in Celebration, uh, is next Thursday, huge milestone event. Uh, shout out to Tara, uh, and all the folks at Space, Tara Wick, all the folks that are on Space, uh, getting everything organized for it. Mayor Clark's been involved. It's gonna be a wonderful evening, four to seven, forward to it. Um. The improvements at the community garden have largely been completed. A bunch of gravel been hauled into the parking area. Um, some we, uh, were addressed, and there's some other things that I think still need to happen, but shout out to Jeff Rivera for spearheading that. Um, the Habitat Triplex project, this was in the report, but I'm. Very happy to report they now have a certificate of occupancy.
Yay.
Uh, their, their final plat. Should have been recorded by now, it's at least at the Yarra County Clerk and Reporter's Office, and, uh, those, those families will be able to move in. Uh, so it's a long lesson coming, a long time coming. Um, we have new political boundary signs that were installed in the three locations, the three entrance locations down. Uh, not much different other than, uh, they're not as faded or nice and new looking and it has the town's really cool logo on there. They're good looking signs. Off the highway, Saturday, July eighth, uh, nine AM, same spot as always, looking forward to it. Um, there's a regional housing conference taking place on June twentieth, put on by the Montrose County Housing Authority. Uh, shout out to, uh, Susan Berriantos for all her work, uh, putting that together, others as well, and Susan in particular. I will, I'm planning to attend, uh, that day. I'm looking forward to it. There's three. Uh, tracks that have been designed. I may jump around, but I'm really looking forward to it. I think Andreas Oglaskin, or I don't know if Andrew's attending, I think Andrew's attending as well. Uh, the workforce transportation project, the update there is that we're, uh, we're looking at after the Fourth of July holiday for, for start. Uh, C dot com. For, for starts, uh, C dot contracting continues to be an issue, uh, so a lot going on, and there's been a short staff, unfortunate. Uh, but it's being pushed up a little bit, and then we have the concert series coming up. And Love Your Value was uh, fantastic, shout out to Pam and Dad. But looking forward to the concerts. Anybody have any questions? Sorry for putting this out today.
I don't know if this is a lightning rod question or not, but the uh, speed limit sign. What's up?
Uh, Shane knows more than I do, but that one, you're talking about the one on the uh.
Why does it hate us?
They, they set a shitty sign. It's a, we've been having problems from day one. And C dots had to manipulate things, and we thought it was the solar panels. Months ago, remember, we thought it was a solar panel, so you moved the location because of the trees, that wasn't it. Um, and I think there's some battery issues, uh, Shane's been kind enough to take that off my plate and go C dot directly. But uh, it's kind of been going on and off, and I think now we're waiting on new parts, right?
No, uh, so I've been up. Three weeks, I mean, resets, the only thing serviceable on the sign. Is to do a reset where you unplug it, leave it for four days, but it's fully charged. And plug it back in, anything else has to go back to the manufacturer. In the kind of other service compared to C O D and then. So I've been working with C dot on getting that up. Knowing we had, the first time I did it, it lasted a week, week and a half, second time I did it, it lasted three days. The service technician for our area, uh, Drango, he's, they have one in their shop. That they will bring out and put in place and send that one back to the manufacturer, cause it is still. We get it repaired, um, but they did that last year with it. Then it worked. Um, if we just dip it over and lay it across the road, as a speed bump, would that work?
All right, I, I heard most of that, thank you Shane for that report, um, it sounds like it's in process. I think we all have the same question, so I'm glad somebody's looking into it.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks for your work.
What else?
And uh, that's it for me, Aaron, we not vote me on the shitty sign.
All right, um. I see we have an interesting joke, Stevens on a roll. I like that one.
Uh, tomorrow's Stevens birthday, so tell him that he's birthday.
All right. Okay, so that um, takes us to an executive session, am I right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Uh, Bo, you want to give us the citation?
Be happy to, mayor. Uh, if we could get an exec, a motion to go into executive session for two purposes. The first of which is pursuant to twenty four six four oh two four B, for the purpose of receiving legal advice. Regarding a specific legal question regarding the possible purchase and or combination of five thirty nine Marion Outlook. Uh, oh, my Marion Overlook, Ridgway, Colorado. And the second is an executive session pursuant to twenty four six four oh two four E. For matters subject to negotiation regarding the town's possible purchase of a water rights.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motions made in the second at all in favor?
Have a good night.
See you, see you.
You're gonna hit your doors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
I assume Joanne's staying on for the water rate discussion.
Uh, yes.
And otherwise, are we ready to go?
Uh, yes, sir.
If we could do the second one first, that would be great.
Um, I would appreciate that.
Preston, I texted Joe, is he zooming on or are we supposed to call him?
Uh, no, he's zoom, he's zooming and uh, we just committed to texting him so he could jump on.
Okay, so I texted him, so, okay, great, um. This is an executive session pursuant to twenty four six four oh two four B for consultation with the town attorney. And twenty six, twenty four six four oh two four E for matters subject to negotiation regarding the town's possible purchase of water rights. And an executive session pursuant to twenty four six four oh two four B for the purpose of receiving legal guys, legal advice. On a specific legal question regarding the possible purchase and or combination of five thirty nine Marion Overlook, Ridgway, Colorado. I caution each participant to confine the discussion to the stated purpose of the executive session. And if any time, uh, the partic, any participant believes that we've gone outside the proper scope of the executive session. Please interrupt the discussion and make an objection. As legal counsel for the town, it is my position that the both matters. Uh, regarding the executive session, uh, constitute privileged legal attorney client communication. Therefore, I'm recommending that no recording be kept in this executive session.
All right. We're back in open session, um, I didn't uh, ask about um. Any committee reports, let me offer an, gee, everybody to give any committee reports they might have. And if not, we can, we can adjourn. Anybody have anything? I think everybody's ready to go home. Another nice three hour meeting, great job, everybody.
Thank you.
Enjoying.
Festival.
I will, yep, you know it, all right, thanks, everybody, we are adjourned.
Thanks, Mo.
Thanks, Preston, thanks Pam.